Okay, I think it's seven o'clock. We will start with the Hennessy Utility at 4:00. Roll call please.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Item two is Consider Approval Consent Agenda. Minutes of meetings. April claims as follows. I'm sorry. Approval claims as follows. September purchase orders, 26894. October purchase orders, 61,0065807. September, October meter deposit refunds, $850 and treasuries. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Oh, sorry. I'm not used to doing this.
Yeah.
Okay. Cliff.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay, item three, citizens comments. Anybody got any comments on the utility agenda? Okay. Other scheduled business. Discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and nor take back action on the following. Discussion of possible action to higher Oklahoma Rural Water Association to install eye trackers in our sewer system to help identify or infiltration problem areas.
You have in your packet a quote from Oklahoma Rural Water Association. We have been talking about all of the infiltration of rainwater and stuff into our system. We did get a quote from another company for approximately $90,000. And so we've been trying to find a more economical way to identify our worst areas so we can start with those areas first. And so we went to Oklahoma Rural Water Association and we're going to let Mr. Steve Wheeler tell you what kind of system they have.
It's actually, it's Okay Water LLC.
Oh, sorry.
It's owned by ORWA.
Okay.
So on your notes, for personal time.
Okay.
Just so we can make sure someone will meet you up here.
Okay.
It is Okay Water.
LLC.
ORWA owns Okay Water.
Okay.
We have, ORWA is a company that's Oklahoma Rural Water Association. It's a private company that does work for rural development and does all kinds of government and state contracts with DEQ and water resources for in and out services and stuff. They started a company called Okay Water. We saw a bunch of little towns and just people that were having to pay huge prices to companies. And we were able to start a company. And one thing we do do, you'll notice on there, as a valued ORWA member, you get discounts that you're collecting in this quote. But we do something called eye trackers and they're developed by a company out of Tulsa. And it's just a flow monitoring device that when you take the lid off of a manhole, you go down in there and you've got a little turnbuckle, kind of like a three-point on a tractor, and it just twists out and locks against the sides. It's got a bar in it with a rod. You hang like an ultrasonic meter, hangs down, program some data into it, and leave it in the, above the flow line in a manhole. And whenever you get heavy rains or you have a problem in infiltration, when you have excess water, so say it's an eight or a 10-inch pipe, you program that data into this little device. And whenever, most manholes, the pipe either comes into them and goes out of them and there's a trough in the bottom of them that the water flows through, or the pipe is continuous through the manhole, there's an inspection window cut in the top of it. So when this device is hanging in there, it's programmed to read that 10-inch. So anytime that flow exceeds that 10-inch, then it gives you what's called relative data. The relative flow or the relative data is relative to the amount of inflow that you're getting in that area. So in your system, we've looked it over and probably taken about 15 eye trackers where the lines dump into the trunk lines that feed over into the lagoons. We just strategically placed those where they would collect different areas, try to get the biggest areas, size them down. That's why we would want to go with 15, because if you spread them way out, then you really don't gain anything except knowing. Anyway, we come in, we set these eye trackers in the different neighborhoods where they tie in, program the amount of houses, the amount of different things like that into it. We leave them there for two to three months. If we get some good rain weather and we get some good dry weather in the first couple of months, then we can go ahead and pull them and read the data off of them. We have a program that is provided through our, the company we bought them from. They plug these numbers into it. And I don't know all the techy business, but they plug the numbers in and it spits out this report. Got a guy that works for us that takes that data. Takes him several days to get all the process. When he gets that, then he produces some little flow charts and different Excel programs and different things like that that we can show you. And then when we get ready to move them, we come in, look at that data, and we say, okay, 80% of it is coming from, say, the northwest side of town. That's probably not north, that's north, isn't it? This town must be turned around. I mean, it was going to be, there's no way. We gotta be going south. We ain't going west. There's no way. Anyhow. I got lost, didn't I?
Can I add one here real quick?
So say the worst part is coming from the northwest side of town, where it's a different direction that is. And we say, okay, so we take these eye trackers, we start migrating them up those lines. Say there's 10 lines or 12 or 15 different lines tying into that area. We would take one of those eye trackers and put in, where all that dumps in, and you put one at the head of it that collects all the data. You compare what you get through those, through the legs, through the one that picks up everything, and that's how you produce those little reports. So, I mean, you could go on and go on with those things about as detailed as you want. But once you do that, then you can bring in a camera and start, you know you need to do 3,000 feet or whatever, because that's what that area consists of or whatever that may be. What they do, and we have some other devices that we do other types of flow monitoring and things with, but smoke testing's real effective. Some of our circuit riders through our ORWA company come out and started that. That'd be something that if we do, you know, do this, get some good data, send our circuit riders back out here, and they said you guys bought a smoke machine, so then you can go smoke that area. But that's what it does. It doesn't provide you with a total flow, but it provides you with what they call relative flow. Relative is basically relative to the situation at the time. These things read like every 15 minutes. So they, they're a little Wi-Fi device. They go to sleep, they wake up, they read, they go to sleep, they wake up, they read every 15 minutes to the duration of the time they're in the ground. So.
Brian, how many gallons do you estimate we get in during a rainstorm?
Back in May, April, May, and June, we was having that sporadic storm come in. At one point in time, I was thinking like a million, a little over a million, million two a day.
That's basically the reason why we want to do this, right?
Yes.
You're making 250,000 to 280,000 gallons a day as your water point right now?
Yeah. I beg to, you know, we're on camera here.
Uh huh.
So a lot of people in town in Hennessy don't know how much water is actually going into that during a rainstorm.
Right.
And we proved this, we need to show the why we're doing this.
Yes, sir. And your water production during the summer is about 320,000, 350,000, 320,000, 350,000. So when you get a rain, 70% or so of your water will get back into your collection to your wastewater system, maybe a little more dependent, but that's kind of what they use, AWWA uses, is 70% of the water will return to the waste. So say you're using 350,000, 70% of that's, you know, 290, whatever that number is, then your flow goes up from, you know, a couple hundred, 200,000 to, you know, 1.6 million. Your lagoons look really good right now. I guess, Brian, whoever's done, been working out there has done a really good job. They're down, they look good. But, you know, you're getting ready to go into winter and it's gonna be a really good time to do it, because you know you're definitely going into some rainy seasons. There's gonna be some rain, there's gonna be some moisture, snow probably before all this is over in the next three to six months. I'm sure you'll have snow out here in this part of the world.
So the 15 initial ones you put out are scattered throughout the community?
Yes, sir.
And then from that data, if you see a hot spot, remove those?
That's basically what we recommend, is because this is what this contract is for.
Yeah. You kind of isolate the.
Pull them and move them. So, and when Brian and I talked about it, I said, they showed me this price the other day and I was like, wow, I thought that guy bought twice that much. And then she said, you got nothing over 90,000. But, and like I said, there is a, you know, a little over $6,000 discount on if you're a registered ORWA member, which probably costs you about 600, 700 bucks a year. So, I mean, to say, you're $6,000 right there.
How long does it take to get the data after?
It'll take us a couple of weeks probably after to get the final report. They gotta go through a lot of those, there's some, when you get those spikes, when that flow encroaches that headroom between what the pipe size is when it comes out of that area, you gotta go through there and kind of, it gets weird spikes readings and things. It's just, they got a little cleaner program. They go in there and install it and kind of remove some of the sporadic spike in it that helps kind of stabilize the data.
Is there a time of year that the eye tracker is more proficient?
Right now is a great time, because you're going, we're gonna have a little bit of dry weather, we're gonna go into winter, you're gonna have some rain, and you're gonna have some dry over the next five to six months. So in the spring is a real good time, right there at the end, you know, in May, but, you know, you may not get no rain in May. It may dry up and you might not get a drop of rain. This time of year, you're about guaranteed, you know you're gonna get some. In the wintertime really, fall is a good time to put them in, because you know you're gonna get some rain, some moisture.
How long?
We'll leave them in at least two months.
Two months.
And if we get some good rain, and then we get some dry weather, so we can get some good data, then we might go ahead and, you know, jerk them and move them. But I think this says.
It says four months.
Okay. And that's leaving them in two months and then come back and set them. That's ideally what we like to do, because we've got, you know, we've only got 20 of them. So when we put 15 or 16 in out here, and if we, that's what I was telling Brian, we won't be able to use any that we have on any other jobs. So if we get out here and we see that we might need 16, then we're gonna go ahead and put another one in.
Brian, this is a video you and I watched in here one day.
Yes, kind of the same thing.
Looks pretty effective.
It's very effective, but like I said, it doesn't give you actual flow. It doesn't tell you how much water. It just tells you where the water's coming from. What they call them, this is the term, that's what they apply, relative flow.
And you took in, we're producing 350,000 gallons, say, 250 to 350 a day.
250, 300.
So that's our water coming into town, but we're taking a million in.
If it rains.
When it rains.
So we're at about 300%.
Yeah, and how much of that water is going to some of this commercial stuff that's not on your sewer? I mean, how much of the water you're selling every day? Right. You know what I mean? So.
So how many people are in front of us for this? Like, how long will it?
It's prime time.
Like, you have them available?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Not next week, but possibly by the end of October, we could have them in the ground. Very possibly. It's gonna start getting cold, you know what I mean? I'd give them as least, you know, fairly decent. And if you want me to come December, I'll be here December 31st.
Well, I just don't want to prove it now. And then you say not be able to do it until February.
No, we can do it now. Be sure and send this to Jimmy Seagull at ORWA.com. See, I was on my best behavior, wearing jeans and red shirt. Thank you. You guys got any more questions for?
Yeah, I have a question, because this is new to me.
Okay.
Would you have a problem if we moved it to the spring season or we're kind of into the fall season already?
You guys are the ones who would have to choose that, not me.
I see.
I, I would recommend it now.
Why would you want to wait till the spring?
Well, we've gone through part of the fall season, you're saying into October.
Well, I mean, we're just now, you know.
You'd get them in, into October.
If we get them in now, we're gonna get some weather through the winter. You're gonna get some rain. If you don't get any snow, you're gonna get some rain out here. But I'd say more likely you're gonna get moisture, but.
I just ask my question, because I'm unfamiliar with this.
That's fine, sir. I don't mind answering any question you have. I'd like to see them go in in the fall, personally, because I've just seen like we've had better results going in and, you know, the end of September, first of October, having them out loud in February. Because you even actually get some snow, and that kind of changes some of your infiltration in the way it gets into your pipes or where it gets into your pipes. When you get snowpack and it starts melting gradually and it starts seeping, you may have some bad, Brian said you had some root issues, some root intrusion. So in some of that stuff, you may not get a lot of heavy rainfall, INI through root intrusion because of the tightness of how it goes through the pipe. But the cracks and the splits, the bad man hose, things like that's where you're gonna start to find it. You know, smoke testing and INI, that's what it's gonna determine. But when the snowpack sets and it starts melting off, especially when you get a couple foot of snow.
This process does determine what the cause of the problem is.
Yes, sir.
Or it just determines the flow.
Well, what it does is it tells you where the water's coming from.
Okay.
Okay, so say we put 15 in, and these five over here have all the high readings, the higher readings on them. These ones over here are kind of moderate, these ones over here are real low. You know that from that area, these eye trackers have determined that the excess amount of your flow is coming from that area. Then you move over to this area, then you move over to this area.
You find a source of where the problem is, then we have to bring somebody else in to scan the pipe.
I guess.
To see what happened.
Like a camera.
Basically trying to narrow it down so we're not guessing.
Right. Just so happens that we have a really nice camera to go do. He said you guys use Huckabee. Huckabee does a good job of it. Maybe they could do a lot cheaper with the mobilization issue.
Right, tree roots were always a big, I think, a big headache in these systems.
There's a company out there called Dick Trupkin though, they have some stuff that, I think I told you about, Brian Conley. He has some root control stuff that's, I mean, it's kind of high, but it really works good. A lot of people take copper sulfate and put it in pantyhose, hang it in manhole, and just let, drop it down in the flow line, and it works. It's pretty effective. I mean, it's a lot better than nothing.
Right.
Because, I mean, copper sulfate eats on organics, eats on the woods. Need part of my pen? Give you that, because that's Okay Water.
Oh, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Done with Mike?
Hang on just a second, we'll vote. You'll find out if we're done.
I got one you can sign right there.
I make a motion to accept the bid from Okay Water.
It needs to be from them. Yeah.
Okay, well, okay, well, real LLC.
Second.
For $16,500.
Yes, I'm sorry, I've got it.
Okay.
Yes, for $16,500. Roll call please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
You wouldn't want to decide that one, would you? I'll take that back to my office, would you?
Um, yeah, come here.
That'd be great. Thank you guys very much. And we will do our best to get out here. We hope you got a class, we got something to be helping you. We got a math class next week. I know we're gonna go through next week.
Okay.
But hopefully the week after, we can get out here and have a discussion.
See, I do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item B is Discussion of Possible Action to Renew Financial Computer Software with Computer Information Concepts. This is our software company that does everything from utility billing to general accounting, everything, correct?
Yes.
And this is an annual contract?
Yes.
What's the price on that?
$11,125.
Nice to meet you all, guys.
Thank you, Steve. Well, we, that's something we can't do in town.
We've been using them since, I think, 2002. Before I came.
I'm going to move to renew the annual peopleware agreement with CIC. Now second that. Roll call.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
All right, item C is Discussion of Possible Action to Renew Property Liability Insurance with Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Tiffany, you got any comments on that?
No, the rates stay the pretty much the same.
Did they give us our discount for that class that they?
We haven't finished it yet.
Okay. So they will be coming back?
We have to finish the handbook. And then we, yes, and then they'll come back.
Trustee's handbook.
The trustee handbook, yes.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the OMEG MLPP renewal for $21,169.
Second.
Roll call please.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Okay, item D is Accept or Reject Any Resignation. It's not received prior to posting the agenda. New business. Send in comments. Counsel person's reports. Anybody got anything? Richard, did you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Harold?
No, sir.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Roll call.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Okay, we will open the meeting for the Hennessy Town Board of Trustees, October 14th, 2021. Roll call please.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Richard.
Yes.
Item B, or item two, report from Hennessy United Board. Barbara.
Now Scotty was here too.
Oh. You have Barb, she can do it. I wasn't at that meeting.
Yeah, I know. Well, Scotty brought up at last night's meeting, getting ready for the Wine and Chocolate Festival this Saturday, that one of the biggest complaints we have is the lines are too long. And if we could get more officers there to, you know, go down the line to get their IDs, because they have to show an ID, and then they can give them their wristband, and that will make things move a lot faster. Well, we've always done that, but we had a suggestion that we'd get more officers. And when I was talking to Brian a few minutes ago, he said they're gonna have eight there. And I would think that would be.
Yeah, they've had two in the past. That was always the bottleneck.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Great.
Eight should be great, yeah.
I don't, I have, I've worked the gate, and it's not so much the officer, because the officer has walked back.
Yeah, I know.
And the IDs, it's the taking of the money.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So we need more people to take the money, you think?
I think so.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have three tables.
It's never been so much the officer, it's been the bottleneck of taking the money and doing the wristbands.
Well, I thought the officers did the wristbands.
No.
We need to have them to be doing that so we know that they're, been ID'd though. I mean.
But not everybody.
Right, I mean, if they're just getting chocolate, then that's no problem.
Then they don't even need an ID.
Then they have to pay, but it's.
Yeah, okay.
You see what I'm saying? Not everybody who pays, not everybody, I guess, it's always been, they get ID'd, they pay, and then they get a wristband. That's how it's always been in the.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Because they could just walk out of the line and go, go on and taste them.
Yes.
Or, you know, jump out of the line.
And go where?
Before paying. They could get the wristband and then just go.
Yeah, but they won't have a wine glass, they can't taste anything.
Oh, they wouldn't have a wine glass, true.
But the wine glasses have always been the same for the house.
Yeah. Okay. But we do, we do have three. We'll have one for the advance tickets, and then we'll have one that's cash only.
And one that's.
And then you are the one, because nobody in our group knows how to operate the credit card machine. And then you and your daughter are gonna be there, right? Okay. What else did we discuss?
And I talked to Shelley about contacting trash company for a couple of bigger dumpsters than what we had, because they now have.
They're the same size. Well, he told me you would bring a four, a four yard and a two yard. That's why he has it in town that he can get over here by this weekend.
What have we had in the past?
Two yards.
Two yards.
And this is gonna be spread, two, four yards.
You've had two twos, now you're gonna have a one four and one two.
Plus they're bringing some.
You think that's gonna be enough? I mean, okay.
Well, it's two yards more than you've had.
Right, true. I think Deacon said that he would take care of the trash cans though, or does the town have?
They're bringing some in.
Okay.
They're bringing the cardboard box trash cans.
And I told them to set up.
Oh, the throwaways or something?
Yeah.
Oh, cool, okay.
I told them to set up the dumpsters over on the northeast corner of the park and the southwest. It's right there where we could, we need, we need trash pretty close.
Let's see, we've got 21 vendors signed up.
That's great.
Remember the numbers. I think it was 12 wine and nine chocolate. Is that 21? Doing this from memory, which good luck. Anything else you can think of, Scotty?
About it.
Okay. And on the leadership class, I think I said something to you before, what a great job that Tiffany had done, and Lindsay, and of course, the judge, Judge Long, in speaking to our high school seniors at the leadership class. But just recently, what was it, two weeks ago, we had Brian there, and then Matt was there, and who else was there? Ed, the police chief was there. Yeah, and they put on a great program for the kids. We had really good interaction that time, we really did. And then yesterday, we had Tyson representing the fire department there, and he did a super job too. Anyhow, thanks.
Okay, Consider Approval Consent Agenda. Minutes of August meetings. Approval claims as follows. September purchase orders, 3,02759. October, October purchase orders, 34,32123. October restricted sales tax fund, 21,77856. October library fund, 53913. October street alley fund, $32.04. And accept the following reports, treasurer, library, and police. Were there any corrections or additions to the consent agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments. Anybody have anything they want to say? Okay, town administrators' report.
I have my report in your packet. I think there's only. We have no new employees on here, it says purchases, the only purchases that we had, which you also approved in here, planes, is the new chairs that we got for the courtroom and the board meetings. The other ones were discoloring, they were also coloring people's pants. So we had to kind of get rid of those before we had. We had people's jeans that were turning pink, so, yeah. I don't know if it was because we were spraying them with disinfectant or why.
That might have something to do with it.
So we went with the other, so we went and have that, that problem. Also, the Sumer Lagoon lift station pump, I had to approve a PO. One of them went out, it's one that lifts it out of the lift, out of the lagoon number one into two, there's a lift station out there. It's at Rush Pumps, they're going to pick it up tomorrow. We thought it was going to be here today, but they're going to deliver it first thing in the morning. So it will be back and then we'll get Caleb to help us install it tomorrow. So we'll have both pumps up and running tomorrow. Other than that, we did get our first half of ARPA money, which was a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So that is coming in, we're going to have to figure out what we can spend the money on. We have until two thousand twenty-four to allocate the money and then twenty twenty-six to spend it.
Just Federal money?
Yes, the American Rescue Plan.
At the OML meeting, I think one of the speakers said that federal government hadn't specified.
Yes, they have.
They probably did it or?
Well, they have, but, I mean, the, probably the easiest, simplest way to spend the money is going to be on water and sewer improvements. So, which, to us, we need that, we need infrastructure improvements. But we're also, we just leave the money in the bank and let it grow till we get our second half, which will be next year. Then we can also do a bigger improvement.
So this is Federal money, there's no time limit, there's generally a time limit.
Twenty twenty-four is when we have to, like, dedicate the money, like, do a PO and stuff like that.
Yeah, you got it right here.
Yeah, and so, but.
All right, other scheduled business, discuss approved, denied, rejected, or take action on the following. Item A is introduction of candidates for vacant town board seat. I have had two people contact me since our last meeting, both are here, Frank Patton and David Jones. Has anybody else contacted any other board members?
Yeah, I've talked to several, so.
I hadn't talked to you, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I didn't talk to you, but.
So there's three board members, so we've got Scotty, I mean, sorry, three candidates for board member, Scotty and then Frank and David Jones. I wanted to introduce them.
Who are the candidates?
David Jones, uh, here, Scotty, and Frank Patton.
Did one drop out?
Yes. So, item B is question and answer period for any and all candidates for the vacant town council position. I feel like this is appropriate if we're going to appoint, however, if this goes to an election, I believe there needs to be a forum, say, the seminar room at the high school auditorium or public can come and ask questions of candidates, how, where they stand on issues. But that's your agenda item, so.
Well, let me say this, Bert, should we hold the town council vote whether we go to election or appoint? Because if we're going to appoint, there's no need to introduce the candidates.
Right, and it's on the agenda. It's the last thing on, the next to last thing on the agenda, item S. So do you want to hold your questions until after?
I think I'll go ahead and do the questions. I think I'm kind of thinking real fast here, I'm not sure I'm kind of exactly what to do. But since the candidates have taken the trouble to come here and I've asked them to come here and since we're going to appoint somebody, I think it's probably good to go ahead and ask some questions.
Well, we haven't decided yet whether we're going to appoint or.
Pardon?
I said we haven't decided yet whether we're appointing and I don't know if you all know our town attorney, John Lynn, and I apologize, John, I probably should have introduced you sooner, this is our town attorney. I, I had called John yesterday with a question because, and I'm really getting off agenda item topic. We could, I suppose we could move the executive session and the item up, but anyway, let me go ahead and say that when we had the state law that Tiffany passed out last month, the state law said the town board shall appoint someone to fill the vacancy. I took that to mean not may, not can, but shall. And then it goes on down in that statute and states that, that if we more or less fail to do that and in sixty days goes by, then we go to special election. So if we take no action to appoint, if I'm correct, John, and that's one reason I wanted you here, if we take no action to appoint someone and the sixty days expires, then it will automatically go to special election. Is that correct?
That's correct, you've got, the statute encourages you to appoint someone primarily because there's a shorter transition and you've got a, then you've got a odd number of people to vote on your board, which sometimes can help. But if you, if for any reason you don't have a candidate or you can't agree on, on the appointment and the sixty days expires, then the law says you, you lose your, you lose your right of appointment. And to, to speed things along, the, the law says you then can schedule a special election. And there's, but there's no obligation on you to schedule that special election. And if you don't choose to do that, then the vacancy is filled at the next general election for town officers, so.
And that's not until April of twenty twenty-three? So legally, we could leave the seat open until April of twenty twenty-three?
You, you could, if, if that was your choice.
When does the sixty days start? From the later of the resignation?
It starts at the date of the resignation.
When is that date?
I don't think it works.
You already be past that, right?
No, it's the end of this month.
Yeah, I think we're getting fairly close, but.
It's around the twentieth.
You're telling me I have a lot of information, then, not sure I understood all of it, so I want to ask you to repeat some of it. Or, I'll ask this question, can we call a special election? Does the new law allow us to call a special election?
You have, you as a board would call that special election should you decide that you can't, you can't find the right person or you don't have a, or you can't agree on filling that vacancy. The, uh, the, the law encourages to hold, encourages you to hold that special session, especially when you've got a big lapse, like, over a year before your general election. Some towns, that, a special election will cost you about two thousand dollars at the election board. And so if this, if we were in February of twenty twenty-three and you couldn't make a decision and you know you've got a general election coming up shortly, you might just wait. And so we find a lot of communities that will endure a vacancy because they don't want to pay the two thousand dollars and they've got a general election coming up.
But ours is a year and some months away.
If we call a special, I'll follow up on my first question, if we call a special election, when will that election be held?
You would have to coordinate that with the election board, they have all these rules and they have special dates. It, uh, you've missed the.
Missed the.
You've missed the November election, so it could very well be early next year before they would schedule a special election for you.
I believe it's February, Richard.
Pardon?
I believe it's February.
February, so it'd be February for the special election.
Right.
November, December, January, three months, February we'd have our election.
Okay, Tiffany's given me a maybe when I said February.
Because we may be really close to the deadline for the February because I know the school just, the school just did their resolution because the filing dates are in December for the February election. So we are coming up really close to the February election filing date.
But. And correct me if I'm wrong here, our, our failure to appoint, if that occurs, because it's down the agenda, that if our failure to appoint would automatically put us into having a special election, correct?
Well, it sounds like, given the resignation date, you, you have just a smidgen of time to make that appointment.
Right.
So it'd be logical to do it tonight, maybe you could do it tomorrow night if you had a, a special meeting, but you're, you're, you're down to the wire and it's, it won't be, if in fact you couldn't reach agreement on the, on the right candidate, then it's not the end of the world because you have safeguards in place, you've got the special election that you can call. And then if you don't call that, you've got the general election, so it's, it's, the, the law figures a way to fill up your board.
Bert, could you have it the same day, the school board election?
Well, that's, that's what I was saying, in February, but Tiffany's wondering if we're too late to file a resolution because the school board just filed theirs for their school board candidacy. Yeah, maybe we're not, hopefully. Tomorrow's the fifteenth, and probably. Well, what I, what I would propose, and I know that it's, it's been, it has been assumed that I'm against a special election, I'm not. I feel like that we, I felt like we had a duty to appoint if we could, and if we can't, then it goes to special election. I.
I feel, Bert, there's three people here, to me, twenty-five hundred is nothing. It's been wasted, this town council. It's not been acted pursuit of grants. Put on the agenda, we're going to sell, to sell those two sealed buildings, that'll cover the twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
February is not that far away. And I say, let it go.
I do, I differ with your opinion on there's not been pursuit of grants because we've.
Oh, let's drop that, as far as what we're talking, but let's just say twenty-five hundred is chicken feed.
Okay, I agree, I agree.
So, we have, this will be our fourth vacancy in eight years.
Okay.
Fourth vacancy. And I think it's time in these situations to let, where you have more, we've got, what, three candidates, fourth one dropped out. Let it go to an election.
Okay.
Let the people of Hennessy voice their opinion.
And we're not. To the agenda item, so we're really on your agenda items whether or not we're questioning the candidates, but if we.
Well, if we're going to vote on it, we don't know which way we're going to go, I want to ask my questions.
Okay. We could move that agenda item up, correct?
Yes.
And take care of it now, we could move up the agenda item to have executive session and then.
You're, you're asking me to vote for people that I don't know what their positions are.
He's wanting to talk to them before he goes back.
You're asking me to go.
No, we could call them into executive session.
No, I want it out in the open.
Okay.
This is a democracy.
Of course, yes.
Just moot if you're going to have an election.
Do what?
I said that, that sort of moot if you're going to have an election.
Yeah, there's really no point if we're, that's why I said we could go back and decide whether we're going to appoint or elect and if we appoint, then do questions, but if we're going to elect, I would like to see a forum some, held somewhere in town to have the candidates come for question and answer.
This is the fourth thing. You could actually decide that tonight, that you would have an election, you don't vote for that, you just vote whether or not you're going to.
Right, and if, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we fail to appoint, then we're automatically in an election because our sixty days is going to expire.
Right.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make is we could move the agenda item up, decide whether to appoint or not and then that would.
Right.
Take care of the issue.
Looking at this election, the fact that this is the fourth time in eight years, there needs to be a process in space, in place. Here we've let, we're right at the end of the time period. There should be a process as soon as a board member resigns.
And there is, I mean, it's in state law.
I know that, but a position should be immediately advertised and let the general public know what we're facing with that law.
Well, Richard, the.
It shouldn't, going back, the situation I see is, is this deadline is developed and now we have to do something.
But we had last month and we didn't take any action.
For very good reasons.
Okay.
Okay, I was unhappy with that procedure.
Well, I'm sorry, but that's the procedure that.
No, there could have been a better procedure.
What, what would be better?
We should advertise and ask people, do you want to serve on the town council?
I think that was covered in news, was it not? That we published the letter of resignation, Jack, Bart? It was covered.
Bert, there's certain things I can't say because we ran executive session, but I was unhappy. And I guess that. Better to say, except, I better not say anything more.
But this, this is your agenda item, so what would you like to do?
I'd like to ask my questions.
Okay.
My first question is, would you tell me something about yourself? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'm retired military, I was in the Air Force, aircraft maintenance was my specialty. As part of that, after I reached senior NCO status, I was responsible for managing facilities, vehicles, special purpose vehicles that applied to aircraft maintenance. that applied to aircraft maintenance. Uh, I retired from the military. I went to work as a Department of Defense civilian, and as an industrial specialist, 1150 series. I worked facilities at Vandenberg Air Force Base, Space Launch. Uh, I worked, uh, acquisition of a new Pmail lab, precision measurement equipment laboratory. Again, that's, uh, basically, uh, acquisition or the purchase process of getting a new laboratory building in place and up and running. It had to be certified by NIST. Uh, I was involved, uh, on a team of people. We managed the garbage dump at Vandenberg Air Force Base. Uh, that base is, uh, included in the boundaries of Santa Barbara County, California. I don't know if anybody in here is familiar with that county out there. It has the strictest EPA regulations in the United States of America that applies to garbage dumps. Landfill is the, is the, is the proper term, is what I'm trying to say. Uh, later on in my civil service career, again, working for the Department of Defense, I worked at an army ammunition plant in Tennessee. I've worked, uh, explosives production, C4 plastic explosive, 60 millimeter mortars, uh, 40 millimeter hand grenades, associated facilities, safety requirements, uh, transportation, et cetera. But I want to come back to my main function in life, most of my life, was aircraft maintenance, and that's, that's what I have, uh, experience with. I've lived in Hennessy, I've owned property here since 1996, and I've lived here. I'm retired now, and, uh, not working, my, the hardest work that I do is fishing and, uh, trying to take care of my yard and my dog.
To me, fishing is hard.
That's all I'll have, that's all I'll say.
Next person?
I guess I'll go next, because everybody knows more about me than I do, so. Most of it's not true, but I've lived here all my life, grew up here, went to school here. Just moved to town two years ago. Contrary to rumors that saying I don't live in town, that I've been hearing, but, but we've been, we moved to town a year ago, June?
Yes.
Haven't been back to the farm since. We really thought we would, but we haven't. But I don't get around that much, but when I do, I see big towns getting bigger, small towns getting smaller, and I hate to see Hennessy dry up and blow away. We lose a lot of businesses to Kingfisher and Enid, and I'm trying to put a stop to that. And, and I know it's been said that if I was on the board, I would try to vote to help on my development, but, uh, I would have anything that, but, uh, had anything to do with my development, I'd abstain from voting, so you wouldn't have to worry about that. And I know Frank and David, they're both great guys, and I think, save the town some money, just, let's, appoint some one of us tonight, but, you know, they're both good candidates, or we all three are, so, like, you'd be happy with any of us, so. Frank, you can have it forward.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, for those who don't know, my name's Frank Patton. I moved here in 2010 from Fort Smith, Arkansas. I'm in the oil and gas business. I currently work for Iron Eagle Resources. Uh, I have served on National Board of Directors for the Professional Landman Association, uh, the Canadian Association. I've worked in Canada for nine years, done tours, run the offices, not in office manager type positions, so do bookkeeping, contracts, you name it, it's kind of just do everything. And I kind of, uh, in short, sort of the same thing Scotty said, is I just got concerned about the town disappearing. I mean, when you, uh, when I drove through town, when I first got here, it's a busy little place, and now I know the economy's got everything down, but when you, when it gets dark, like, I mean, it literally rolled up the sidewalks in this town. You know, you have to go to Kingfisher, you have to go to Enid to eat, or so forth and so on, and I just think there's some opportunities that are being missed out there, and I would just like to, you know, work with anybody and everybody to see that happen. That's my, that's my goal. I'm, I don't have any agenda to fill, or there's no animosities toward anyone, or favoritism, or any of that, I just want the help of town.
That was very good. You kind of took care of my second question, but if you want to touch on it, I'm going to ask the second question, but I think all three of you touched on it. What is your vision for Hennessy? Green street, parks, library, the museum, the pavilion that's been proposed? What is your, what is your vision for Hennessy?
Well, I, I kind of start with one thing that I've always wanted to do, and I think it'd be nice, because of all the activities that could happen, and hopefully will happen, is use that $2,000 or whatever and put it toward a nice size digital marquee to put in the park to advertise what's going on in this town. You know, like, hey, next week there's, or this weekend, there's a wine fest, and call someone, so to register, and you could sell spot ads on the thing, you know, for like, set a fee, and just have somebody, if you want your advertisement up there for the month of November, you know, you pay X to the city, and you get your little thing up there, even birthday announcements. I mean, you could raise some money to get, to recoup that. But you mentioned the resignation of the, uh, councilperson. I found out by total happenstance. I don't read the paper, newspapers, I don't get the Kingfisher paper, other than to look to the legal ads, I do that, but that's just it. And it just, there's not a way to actually see things. I just think a little billboard electronic thing would be nice for this town. And then get the people to come in when they drive through on their way to the city. Say, oh, let's come back here this weekend, because they're going to have this wine fest. And it gets more than just this county involved. Because I like to spend other people's tax money.
Yeah, I agree with Frank, we need to, we do need a sign like that. I was thinking about it for a long time, but I think it needs to be at, uh, 81 or 51, because we have a lot of 51 traffic going through that wouldn't see it if it was downtown.
Well, I know the owner of the corner there.
Yeah, that's right. Get that done. And, but, oh, you know, we have to build up retail, we need a more tax base. Money solves everything, so we do, we need more, we need more retail, and, like, I built the PSC building out here, they have 250 employees now, probably less than 10 live in Hennessy, and I go through there and ask them why they won't move here, and it's, main, main answer is no Walmart. You know, they just, there's nothing, nothing for them to buy, nothing for them to do here, so we just got to, got to build slowly, and retail, and for things to do, and then if we do that, housing will follow, and then we'll have money to spend on the parks, and build to the pavilion, and nicer things.
Something that, that interests me, uh, I don't want to use the word short term, but I don't want to use long term either. It's what Tiffany was talking about earlier, uh, water, sewer infrastructure. I, I'm excited about the, the grants that you guys are talking about, and possible, you know, more infrastructure improvement in the future, based on grants and, and, you know, money management that's done in this room. And, uh, I just had personally, Bert is a witness to my problem, uh, last week. I had, uh, I had a major gas leak at my house, and, uh, I realize that's not a Hennessy city, uh, infrastructure problem, but that, that just drove home again to me that, that, you know, I know that the sewer system in this town is, is very old and requires a lot of maintenance, as it is now. And I'm really excited about what you guys were talking about earlier, uh, the gentleman talking about the, uh, tracking the water flow. I, I think that's a real neat project, and I think the results of that will probably really make some big improvements. But I, I know we, we've had a lot of problems at the water plant, sewer, uh, and that's something that, that I would, you know, if I was appointed to the board, that I would, uh, try to get involved in if I could.
I've got 15 questions, we're making good progress. No, I got 15. Thank you, Jim. I'm going to cut it to one question, because your first responses were so good. You answered, I have eight questions here, and you answered them, so we'll cut it down to one, one question. If your house was on fire, and you called the town hall, and the town hall sent me to start the fire, go to the fire station and put out your fire, your house would burn to the ground, because I'm not trained to be a firefighter. There are all these classes and workshops sponsored. One is by the Northern Oklahoma Development Authority. It's 28, 20 minutes, uh, easy minutes up to Enid. The Oklahoma Municipal League sponsors all kinds of workshops. I took the Small Towns and City workshops, and included many sessions, just like the OML meetings, including grants. There's a grant workshop sponsored by the Oklahoma Municipal League. And then there's the annual, uh, Oklahoma Municipal League. Tiffany got on my rear end, kicked my butt, got me up there, and it was just a marvelous meeting, all kinds of sessions. So here's my question. Are you willing to go to classes and workshops that teach basically community development? And I'm going to give an example. We have a wonderful swimming pool. Where did it come from? It came from Tiffany. Tiffany found that swimming pool by going to the Oklahoma Municipal League. They have a trade section there, exhibits, and Tiffany found the swimming pool company that built this wonderful swimming pool. So those resources are there for us to use. So here's my question. Are you willing to attend these workshops and training classes of community development? Yes? Scotty?
Oh, yeah, we're never too old to be learning.
Uh, yes, sir, my answer is yes. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, uh, I am retired. I'm not bragging about it, but it feels good. But I do have a little bit of time on my hands that I can, you know, get involved in some of those activities that you're talking about.
I would like to follow that. The town of Hennessy is a town trustee form of government. We have a weak mayor system. It is not the job of the mayor or the town trustees to attend grant writing schools and such. Uh, Richard, Harold, myself, Tiffany and staff went to the OML conference this year, and it was good, and I will be going back. But I don't want it to be projected that it is the day to day, it's the job of a town trustee to operate the town on a day to day basis.
That's not day to day basis, Bert. You have not attended these classes.
I, you, you made your letter to the editor public along with an email from, uh, from Frank, and I have not attended, attended classes at the OML conference, but I've not attended grant writing classes. We use Noted for our grant writing. Prior to that, we used an independent, uh, lady for our CDBG, and, uh, that's, that's how our form of government operates. We're not out here and...
Bert, I can tell you, I have attended these classes. There's town administrators that have been with Tiffany, and Tiffany's attended.
Exactly.
There's town employees that attend these classes.
Okay.
There's volunteers that attend these classes.
Then why aren't they writing grants?
There are mayors that attend these classes.
Okay.
There are town council members that attend these classes.
Are they from a strong-mayor form of government, such as in...
I don't know what kind of government they got. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. You, we're not going to go there, but...
We have left a lot of money on the table, a lot of money, because we're not pursuing grants.
We are pursuing grants.
Let's turn to table one and two.
No, that's not on the agenda, we need to go to item C.
It's on the agenda.
But we're, we're on item C, Richard.
Okay, but that's, where do we have it? H. We'll discuss this letter to the letter on H.
Okay. So does anybody else have any questions, other candidates?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Can I ask one question real quick?
Sure.
If we actually have an election, how many would you run?
Excuse me?
If we actually have an election, how many of you would run?
All three of you.
Scotty, would you run?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, okay.
Okay, item C is discussion with possible action to renew financial computer software with computer, computer information concept, CIC.
Make a motion to take action to renew the finance of computer software. With computer information concepts.
Okay, second, Roko.
Harold.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Cliff.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Okay, item D is discussion with possible action to renew property liability insurance with Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group. I will make the motion to accept the re, no other property liability insurance with...
One second.
Roko.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes. Okay, item E is discussion with possible action to advertise for bids for new storm sirens system. We began working on this some time ago, uh, got delayed, delayed due to COVID and some other issues. We have a pretty antiquated storm siren system. It is electrically powered and activated through telephone lines. Of course, when we have severe storms, many times we lose power and, and/or telephone lines, which would render that system as, as nonexisting. Um, Tiffany, did you make copies of these for the...
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I have worked on this, uh, and what I'm proposing would be a...
Can you give some of those out? I have three, can you guys can show them?
I'm proposing a total of six storm sirens. Um, some would be in existing locations, some would be in new locations. Uh, some would be close to existing locations, would be moved. In that request for proposal, it calls for five electromechanical sirens that are motor driven. They would have battery backup, they would go into self-test on a daily basis, not meaning that they go off every day, but a computer in the police station would send a signal to them, it would check battery levels, continuity, AC level, everything that, uh, to make sure that, that they were properly going to work if needed. Now, five of those would be electromechanical. I propose one electronic type siren, which would be a large amplifier and speakers to put downtown, um, for the simple reason, and I would suggest putting it over on the lumberyard property back toward the far west, far west side. But the purpose there is that that can double as a public address system, so you can speak over it. And, uh, that way, if we were to have downtown events, and we wanted a, a public address system, that would already be in place. Anyway, what, what it amounts to is, it's kind of like, um, the request for proposal, we went out on the pool, and then companies come in with, this is what we can do for this much money, and that's what I've requested here. Um, the only thing, uh, that would really be left to do would be, I need to go out with somebody from OGNI and make sure on the places where we would be moving that we would get, be able to get electrical power to them. If not, they do have a solid package that we can use to... If not, they do have a solid package that we could use to activate them. And the activation would all be done through radio. So they could set them off from the police department with the, with the radios. Anybody got any questions on that?
Are the sirens that we have now not operating or they're just old?
They are. They're old. It's, the one that's on the water tower was put in, I think, in 1956. It, we can't get parts for it anymore. And it's, it's very outdated. The others are becoming more outdated. But the, the problem is that we're depending on both electrical power and telephone power to, or telephone line continuity to be present when we need to activate them. And if, if not, then we're just sitting ducks, basically. We can't set off the system.
Yeah. If you remember, what was it up in, up there? What town that lost their phone lines and all of that? And they weren't able to activate their, their-
Storm sirens?
Storm sirens. I can't, I think it was Gliddan or something like that a few years ago.
This is to this, I think what you're proposing, Burton, is excellent. But this is to the side, it's sort of irrelevant, but I'll make the point. So many of these smartphones go off when there's a storm.
If that is happening, it's the city, it's turning to go up because of, uh, it got knocked out.
People have batteries, also have the battery backup power.
We could even, they make a little module about the size of a, an alarm clock, I think, that we could even get, or the school could get, to plug into their office or the nursing home could. If those storm sirens activate, then that little module in their buildings activates as well. So they've got an in-house warning system. And I think they're about 200 and something of these, I believe. But I can see a lot of possibility with that. People with hearing impairments, that would probably be, I know I have trouble hearing the siren and it's on my street. And what I've got proposed is moving it further south. And, but if it's at night, I have trouble hearing it in my house. But if somebody wanted to buy one of those modules, where she can basically do the same thing with the weather radio. But the one siren that would be, two locations that would be completely new, would be taking the one off Oakwood Drive. And if you see that far south yellow pin, that would be at the corner down by Eggs Acres. And I understand that's how a city limits. However, we have a lot of people living in Eggs Acres and Miller Heights that would reach, that would also reach the Oakwood Drive addition as well. The other one, which would be a new location, is over here on the east side, right over here, would be probably around Third and Oak or Fourth and Oak. Be pretty close to you, David. It'd probably wake you up.
Yeah.
But it'd be like a block or two blocks south of your house. And as you tell in pinpointing these, kind of, we've kind of staggered them across town in a zigzag so that we get better coverage. And estimated cost, I imagine we're looking at 150 to 175,000, somewhere like that.
Are they on a whole?
Yes.
Does that take a whole lot of energy?
No, no. No, and they would go in existing apartments. One of them would replace the one out at the elementary school playground. One would replace the one over at the water shop.
Does it show how tall they are? Does it show how tall they are?
Forty feet. Forty, well, they go on a forty-foot hole.
How much did you say, Burton?
Probably 150 to 175.
Do we have some money for that?
We have restricted sales tax money in emergency services would cover that.
I think there were 22 tornadoes in western Oklahoma in the last three days, so.
Well, I'll be honest with you. Maybe I shouldn't say this on camera. I, when we have spring storms, kind of, I cringe a little bit because even though we test them, there again, the reliability of that phone line link, back in the seventies, they put one at the end of the street I live on. And nearly every time we test it, we have telephone line issues and have to have it repaired. And I just feel like it's something we need to, we need to do for the safety of our community.
I have a statement as a storm chaser that, you know, we all have our smartphones and we get those alerts all the time. But there's nothing more, there's nothing that will get your attention more than the citywide siren going off. That puts it on a different level.
It does.
This has now gotten very serious. You're not watching the television news guy ramble on about something. And it's, it's a take-action call. And I think it's, it's very important to have, to have an operating system, a reliable system.
Were you writing? I'll make a motion to go out for bids on the new storm warning sirens.
My second.
Roque.
Cliff.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Burton.
Okay. Item F, discussion of possible action on the failure to notify town council members of candidate. Richard, that's yours.
I got the email. I asked if it was due, but it wasn't. I don't see it in the back.
It's in there. It's in the back of your, all your stuff.
I've got an extra copy out of here. And it gets back to the issue I'm raising. This will be our fourth vacancy to fill. But it said, I, I called, reading the email, I called town hall and asked my name to be put on the list of interested parties for a few weeks, a few weeks ago. They told me to talk to Burton, which I did, but he had no clue as to what they were going to, what they're going to do about the vacancy. I'm still interested in the council and would like to get this town cleaned up and things organized for activities before it's too late or save it if it's not already. Why would we apply to Frank? Apply for the town council?
Because we haven't had a meeting since I talked with Frank.
We had a executive session to appoint a person to the board. Frank, when did you make this?
When did you talk to Burton?
It would have been, well, I just recently talked to Burton this past weekend. But when I called town hall several times, it was probably about two or maybe even three weeks before I responded with that email. So it was around in that.
Was it before? Here's the question. This is the October meeting. Was it before the September meeting?
Well, it was, whatever date that email was sent, it was, it was actually the next morning or that day before. Was it almost simultaneously?
We actually met, we actually met in September 12th.
So it would have been after then.
After. Okay. Then it's not an issue.
Well, it is an issue because you're apparently not trusting me to bring candidates to the board and-
No, I don't trust you, Burton. No, I don't.
Oh, we got an attorney here. I think that's a big problem. Can I ask the attorney a question? Terrible people can come up and ask us to be on the board, but two, we think that we want to point. We don't have to list everybody that's came up and talked to us, right?
I, I don't know. I thought that there's a, an answer to that query. Certainly, as a board member, you don't have to regurgitate everything that you've heard the last 30 days around town. You don't have that obligation. And so whether the, the water cooler's not working or the, or the police car won't start, and you're aware of that, I don't know that you have an obligation to spit all that out. And, and so when someone volunteers to, to fill a vacancy or, or ask questions about that vacancy, I, I just don't know what a trustee or a mayor's obligation is to repeat that. I, I, I would encourage you, if, if, for the next vacancy, that you advertise it in a way that will reach the most members of the community. And that might be through your water bill or it might be through your website. I, I don't know what that would be, but I think you all do, what gets the word out. And newspaper certainly is a-
That's the hard part about, like the newspaper. A lot of people don't read the newspaper or it's on telephone or on Facebook or all about Hennessy.
Yeah.
Some people ignore that.
Some people don't even read our water bills, so.
So what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is a process where if you've got a, a person that's genuinely interested, then they would file an application to, to be considered for the vacancy. So there's, we've got a paper trail. We've got someone that's willing to, to, to do something more than just say, hey, I'm interested. Because that's not, in my opinion, not quite enough. Because then you don't know, well, are they really interested? Or are they just talking about it? Or, you know, what, what is the plan? Obviously, the three gentlemen tonight that have, are in attendance are genuinely interested, and now we know that. But I, I don't, you know, I, I don't know that there's a good question to that answer, Mr. Snig. And I don't know what's happened in the past, how you, you know.
Well, that's what it comes down to. This is the fourth time in eight years, and we don't have a process in place, you know. Who do you talk to? Do you call the town hall? Do you call Burton? Do you call Richard? How, you know?
Yeah.
We don't have a process in place.
No. I, I think it would be nice to have a process. And that would be true for whether somebody wants to serve on a committee or something, a, a town project, that you could encourage people to do that through some type of advertising. But then tell them, hey, listen, if you're serious about this, you got to come to, you got to, you got to come to City Hall and do something about it. And just, and not just talk about it, but, but you got to do something about it. So I, I think if we could get the process a little cleaner, then it would eliminate any discretion as to whether this, you know, that, that you or I have decided that this person is serious or they're just kind of talking about it or they're dreaming about it or whatever. You never-
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah. I just don't know that, that it's fair to say that, you know, unless they just, you know, they're just adamant about it, either at a meeting or through some kind of application process, that we really know whether they're sincere or not. Plus, we, plus we want to know whether they qualify. And so a lot of time, people that talk about it might not even meet the filing requirements. And so we don't want them to come forward and we appoint them, and then we find out that they, they forgot to move their voting registration.
Well, I think just recently we had a candidate in the town council.
Yeah.
She wasn't qualified.
That's correct. The way I understood it.
Yeah. She wasn't qualified.
So, so that would be my suggestion. You try to formalize that a bit more.
Great.
Maybe one way, I just wrote that down, in the process while we're, while we're putting that trustee handbook together, maybe putting it in that, that process in that trustee handbook.
Good idea. Well, I, I agree. And I was going to suggest, because I don't know if it would take an ordinance or probably not, but a procedure to be put in place that if somebody wanted to apply for a vacancy, they do it on paper and bring it here. That way, none of us are called individually, none of us are handed anything individually. Because I heard that Scotty was a candidate wanting to run, but Scotty hadn't talked to me and nor, nor should he have to. And, and when, when Frank called me, I said, you know, I'm not sure what's going to happen because we'd had the September meeting. I don't, I think I told you, I don't know if we're going to appoint or if it will go to the election.
That is true.
And then I called you back here in the last week, and we talked a little further. But, but Richard, I assure you, I promise you, I brought every candidate I had to the last meeting that these candidates talked to me afterwards.
I assure you that after our executive session last time, well, I guess I'm not supposed to talk about it, so let's move on to the next agenda.
Okay.
Hey, Burton, I would like to make a suggestion. If you do that application, put on the application the requirements for being on there.
That's a good idea.
That way, when they sign that application, they're signing that they've reviewed the, the requirements and they meet the requirements.
Are you here to be a candidate? No?
No. Are you sure? I don't like him.
He's already served that sentence once.
Okay. Item G is discussion with possible action to declare surplus rusty used steel pavilion building frames. Richard?
They're laying in the dirt, mowed out by the sewer plant. Let's sell them. There's no use for them.
Tiffany, do you remember what size those are?
Um, one is, they're like 50 by 70 and a-
I think the bigger one was like-
75 by 100.
125.
One's like 100 by 70 and one's 50 by, they're odd. They, they don't like fit together. So it's like 50 by 70 and then like-
Pavilion.
100 by maybe 75. I have it somewhere and I couldn't find it today. Just like Harold asked me something and I couldn't find it today either. Finally found it after I looked for an hour.
I really have mixed feelings about selling them. I, I've never given up on the prospect of using at least one. These buildings, for any of you who may not know, are buildings that were bought from Canadian County. They were at the Canadian County Fairgrounds. And they were pavilions. And what we purchased is the frames, the red iron. They do have some surface rust on them. Of course, if we ever were to wreck them, we would sandblaste, taint and put sheet metal on them too.
The siding was also purchased, but never picked up.
Correct, Richard.
Yeah. The siding, when they took it off, had all of the screw holes. So to match that up would have not even been a possibility.
No. I talked to three general contractors and my architect. And all four of them said, moving used steel building is not uncommon. In fact, it's pretty common. But you can't get the hoes to line up in a roof.
Exactly. And that's why we were going to do the new tent. So we didn't have pre-existing ones. And we've had them a long time. This was back when, actually, either Wes or Curtis found them, and brought them to the board to discuss a purchase.
I would offer you a word of caution about that. Because IBTS, through their code enforcement, chose to make us secure engineering for everything we do, then I don't think the town should exempt itself from that. If you choose to move forward with those used frames, then you should follow the same rules that we would have to, if we were gonna recycle used buildings.
Absolutely, we would.
And I think you would look far and wide to ever find an engineer that would ever go along with that, because of the occupancy requirements. Public use buildings being way levels of the typical modern buildings.
One of the frames I would propose using, I wasn't thinking of putting in city limits, so. The, I was thinking the fifty by seventy, using it possibly out at the water plant, because we've got equipment to put under it for, to keep out of the weather and stuff like that. Maybe bring the sides on down instead of just a roof, but.
Once out of city limits, you don't have that permit.
Exactly. But if you did put them in city limits, you're right, we would definitely follow them.
Well, so that goes back to that discussion we had. If we all have to do it, then everybody's gonna get to do it.
For sure.
Then we would. And I don't think there's an engineer in this state certified at steel that would go up in the air for a pavilion again. It's just, nobody's gonna take that chance. Because the occupancy load could be, there could be three hundred people under one, and if it fell, you know, there's not enough liability to cover that.
So that's true.
And that's why some of us were opposed to that from the very beginning.
Thoughts, guys? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion that those two used steel buildings should be declared surplus. If they find a use for them in the meantime, do it by all means.
You have a motion on the table?
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Before we do roll call, let me ask one question. Would declaring them surplus would put them to be sold when? When we have another surplus sale?
Or we can find an auction, or, or we can do solvía, or. But the first step is to declare them surplus.
Roll call?
Correct.
You actually don't, I mean, you could, you could sell it tonight without any kind of advertising. There's no real restriction on.
Oh, I thought we had.
How you sell your property. You may have.
I didn't think we could just sell them. I thought we had to, like, go to, like, to make sure that we get the best price and not.
You're not obligated to do that. A lot of towns do that, because it's a sense that we're not just gonna sell it to our brother-in-law.
Yeah, that's right.
At a low price. So oftentimes, towns will, on a periodic basis, have a surplus sale. And oddly enough, the police department runs it. So I don't know whether they think it's, they're gonna run off.
They have the most staff that they confiscated from.
So should he amend his motion to, if he wanted to, to surplus it and sell it?
Yes. Or he could just amend his motion to say, you know, I wanna declare it surplus, and I wanna designate the town administrator, I wanna give her the authority to dispose of it as she sees fit. And that way, you're through with it.
The people that we bought it from said that they possibly would buy it back.
Oh, really?
Because I got ahold of them before.
Recently, or?
I don't know what you're saying.
About a year ago.
About a year ago.
Can I speak? I'd like to come on the board, so these were bought before I was on here. And it kinda likes the deal, and it'd really like to know the history of it, why we bought them, what was promised all along with it.
We bought them to put the large one over on the Roy Johnson property, to have a downtown venue for, say, the wine festival was to give, rent out there, be a place to go, to have concerts, to have gathering place, car shows, tractor shows, any kind of event. I said the one's pretty big. It's about seventy-five by a hundred, or a hundred and twenty-five. I can't remember.
I understand that we was gonna put it over here on the Roy Johnson lot.
Correct.
And we gonna get the other eleven lots to the north of it, if we did it?
I asked, when we had that horrendous pavilion meeting, the first question I asked was, what color are they? Because, Burton, you said you were gonna buy new steel siding, but that's not what was presented to me in the pavilion meeting. Now, everybody was yelling and screaming, so I may have misheard.
Not everybody was. I didn't even yell upstairs.
You let it go on for forty-five minutes. If I was mayor, I would've kicked some butts.
Is that a meeting? I didn't go to that. I mean, I.
No, it wasn't a public meeting.
Oh.
It was a meeting of Wes and myself, Curtis and Tiffany, and Richard.
Yeah, I just sat back.
And I endured forty-five minutes of yelling and name-calling to intimidate me. I wanna let you know the story of those two still buildings, to give those eleven lots to the town.
I just, I just came on.
Let me finish, let me finish this story. When I came to Hennessy.
Don't intimidate me, go ahead.
I came to Hennessy, I saw those eleven lots were for sale. And I thought, how marvelous, because I knew the town owned the Roy Johnson property. And I thought, we could put these two parcels together. This is a one in a billion-dollar, billion chance to do something nice there. So I bought the eleven lots. I notified the town council that they, I'll give them the eleven lots, if you do something nice. And I also put in that, that if you just leave it all grass, and put up tents like you do at Memorial Park for the wine festival, that's good enough. I'll give you the lots. Four years later, I never heard a word. And then I got called in that horrendous meeting. I was out of town when they bought the lots, when I came in, I knew, when they bought the steel buildings. And so I knew what the subject was. So that's the story of the steel buildings.
Right, like I said, I just got, we were even discussing this yesterday, when I got this. So I drove down there and looked at them, you know. Like Jay says, you know, it'd be tough to put them up, but can they be used truly, like out there? But anyway, it's all questions I got to ask.
You know, I brought this up and made this motion, I don't know, a year or two, a year ago, or somewhere. I can't remember. Because the same thing, we're gonna find a use for them. We're gonna find a use for them.
I hadn't given up on putting one over on the lumberyard property.
Pardon?
I said I hadn't given up on putting one on the lumberyard property. But Jay brings up the point about engineering, that maybe we could never do that.
You will not get those eleven lots until there's a schematic drawn.
Yeah, I understand. But what you want over there is a pavilion, correct me if I'm wrong, two-story with a restaurant on the top.
This is the attitude I encountered in that meeting.
No, I'm just asking a simple question.
You can put anything in the world there. That's the answer.
Okay.
You can design that building, buildings, to incorporate tennis courts. You're not doing the wine festival, not doing a car show, it's concrete floor. If you build the height of the building, as mentioned, you could put in covered tennis courts. It's so windy.
So you mean like enclosed on the sides?
Within the main building, yeah.
Enclosed?
You could put in pickleball courts. That's getting to be more and more popular, pickleball, which is a small form of tennis. You could design it to be retail space with kiosks. You could do several things. But it was obvious from that meeting, the years started just now, exciting, absurd things.
No, I'm.
I've had enough, Burton. I'm seventy-five years old, and I'm just, I'm running out of patience. I've had enough, Burton.
What do you, what do you want? I mean, tell us.
I want a schematic, and I wanted to put up, usually, why vote? What do you want?
You wanna put up to vote? I'm not trying to be obstinate, Richard, I wanna know what you're looking to accomplish.
Okay, let's get back to this. Can we get back? We're running off, we're talking about the.
I move the two used steel buildings to be declared surplus, and give the town administrator the authority to sell them.
Okay.
I'll second you.
Okay, roll call?
Richard?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
No.
Burton?
No. Okay. Item H, discussion on long-term planning and grants. Richard?
Hennessy has missed a lot of opportunities for grants. Let's go to tables one and two.
Where's table one and two?
In the back of the big packet.
Top page one.
Page one.
Is this the one that's the letter for the editor?
Yes, I just put it all together.
Okay.
When we had that, I was new on the town council. Glenn Roder came in complaining about their water problems, water drainage problems. And that was quite a beating that evening. The next day, I called Kingfisher, I talked to their town administrator, since Kingfisher was doing so much in flood control, and asked him, Burton, can, how do we, how can we get some assistance with flood and drainage control? And where do we start? And David said, go to the Northern Oklahoma Development Authority, start there. Burton had written an article about that meeting, so I took it to them, and gave it to the very nice official that they, to talk to. I asked that person to read it, and when she, when that person finished, I said, can you help us? And she said, yes, we can. And as part of that, the official gave me table one, which I have updated as we've gone through the years. You can see, we got twelve years, I think it's actually thirteen years, from 1998 to 2010, we received re grants. Then from 2014 to '22, with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, only two of those nine years we applied. We had this very successful run of getting grants, and then, for some reason, some inexplicable reason, we stopped applying for grants. Now, two years, Hennessy applied for grants. One year, there was a fifty thousand dollar grant for a party room by the swimming pool.
It was not a party room. It was a pavilion.
I thought it was a party room.
No, it was a pavilion for the park.
Which park?
The new park.
Okay. But anyway, the capital improvement plan hadn't been updated. And so that application was rejected.
Is that correct?
No, we just didn't meet the points-wise, because they said that the pavilion was not a qualif, it wasn't qualified that year.
You got docked ten points because it wasn't in the capital improvement plan.
That's just what they told me. That's what they told me, anyway.
That's what NODA told you? You were docked ten points because it wasn't in the capital improvement plan?
No, they told me that the park pavilion did not reach the categories that year.
They found different.
I get different stories from time.
I'm just telling you what they told me that year.
The score, you gave me the sheet, and you had it, the score eighty on it.
I'm just telling you what they told me that year. We went, and let me tell you, Richard, the background of this, okay? So when NODA has went, during that time period, NODA went through a lot of personnel issues. And we had some issues with their staffing, trying to get us to apply for things that were not.
I know there was one lady that was giving you trouble.
Yes.
And she joined the firm that tried to push down Hennessy's throat.
Yes.
We discussed that.
And so that's when we had a lot of issues with NODA, and we didn't, we were having problems applying for grants. We just finally, we distanced ourselves away from NODA for a while, because we thought what, a lot of things that they were doing was unethical. And so we did not wanna get in trouble with some of the things that they were doing. And until Jennifer came along, and they got rid of that person, we did not want to get in trouble with some of the things that they were trying to get us to do.
I wouldn't have gone there, right? I would've called Representative Sanders and said, we've had trouble.
We did.
We did, we did contact Representative Sanders. So I will tell you that that's why there's several years that we did not go through NODA for that.
Had to have price to pay, I would've complained.
We did.
We did.
We did.
We did.
Yes.
Let's go to table two. The water meters.
So we're on.
Page, page ten. How much is it, the whole system, gonna cost?
How much is the whole water meter's gonna cost us? The whole system is probably gonna cost us, I'm not quite sure.
I think there are twelve hundred meters, and at the December eighteen, twenty nineteen thing, it would take a hundred and forty-six thousand to do the three hundred meters. I just multiplied it by four, came up with the figure of six hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Were there any grants applied?
No grants. And you want me to tell you why? Because you have to go through a lot of government red tape. And so you may get stuck with meters that you don't want, vendors that you don't want, and things like that.
And we tried some meters that did not work.
Now, Billy installed, they applied for water meter grant, and got it from page ten, table two. Helena, Helena, whatever, forty-five thousand.
I understand that.
Call, twenty-five thousand.
But.
Greenwood, thirty-three thousand.
I understand that. But we're applying for other things.
What are other things?
New water lines.
We're on that list, Richard. We got forty-five thousand on your list.
Yeah, I said, no, I put it in there, water line. Yeah, I said, I, no, I put it in there, water line.
We're applying for water lines.
But you could have, if you did long-term planning, and phased it in, you could have gone for grants for it.
But then we wouldn't end up with the water lines.
You, do your, if you do long-range planning, go ahead, if the water line's the priority, with long-range planning, you put that in your priorities. If the water line is a priority, go for a grant on the water line.
And that's what we did, but we still need water meters too, so we're doing both. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I don't. What I, I could say, do in one water line, and then follow up with your meters. My question is, why didn't, why not apply for grants for the water meters?
Because we're, we're using the grant for our water lines.
Okay, is the water line in?
And they're delivering the materials next week. It was in the.
You're talking, yeah, the REAP, REAP grant. What about the CDVG grant?
Okay, you're talking about a REAP CDVG, correct?
Either one, all three.
Okay.
The REAP CDVG and the combined REAP CDVG grant.
CDVG, we did the storm drain project. And I put in there that we're going to go for, we're going to try to finish out the storm drain project, so complete that bowl, because it was six hundred and some odd thousand dollars for the whole storm drain.
I think that's a good idea, complete one thing before jumping to something else.
Correct.
I think that's excellent.
Now, a REAP CDVG, the combined REAP CDVG, they only give that to one community.
That's correct. And I, I made that point in this material.
Yes, they only give it to one community.
One unit.
Yes, one community. And normally, they only give it to a small community. Normally, it's a small community.
Small, small community.
Huh?
We're small community.
Canton. Usually, population less than a thousand, they usually give.
Do they give priority?
Yeah.
With the REAP grants, they stay under five thousand.
Yes, but the REAP CDVG combo grant, they usually give it to a very small community, not, you see what I'm saying?
I have an email, I have to sort through it, find it, because it's old.
But the REAP.
I have an email, Tiffany, because I posed this question to NODA. They said, we could have gotten a combined REAP grant for fiscal year twenty-twenty. We could have applied for a combined REAP.
We can, we can apply, yes. We can apply, yes. Yes. We can apply. But this year, we can't, because our REAP is not completed.
I talked to the lady in Canton, I talked to her three times, and she reiterated to me, she said, I talked and talked and talked with NODA, and I told them, if we didn't comply, if we didn't, we're going to get the combined REAP grant, then break it down for a separate REAP grant, and then a CDVG grant. We don't want to be left out. So I think there needs to be some questions.
No, I talk to Jennifer all the time. I'm in constant contact with Jennifer. She's always helping me. Now that NODA has Jennifer.
She's good.
She's very good.
And the gentleman that helped with the code said she was very good.
Yes. No, Jennifer is wonderful.
She's wonderful, I agree.
Yes. Now, now that NODA has Jennifer, she will help us out all the time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm not done, Bert.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is my third meeting in a week. I think the legacy program, the legacy thing is in our agenda, so I'll skip over that. The library and museum, there's been no grants applied for that.
What do you mean, the library and museum?
The old high school building, make use of the old high school building. I'll skip over that. I'm finished.
Item. Witness, yeah. Discussion of possible action to develop a legacy giving program, advertising, and website sponsored and led by the town council. Richard?
I'd like to establish a legacy program, giving, there's fifty-five counties, forty are members of the Community Foundation of Oklahoma. The Community Foundation of Oklahoma was set up by rural leaders, led by gentlemen from Duncan. The Cherokee Strip Foundation has about fifteen rural counties in the city, rural towns with them. I pushed that into town council for five years, never got it through. And shortly thereafter, that's when Raymond Kokajohn gave the gifts of four farms, his mint oil rights and his windmill, to the NSC Education Foundation, and I multiplied out the numbers, and it's worth millions. And shortly after that, five years, the chapel was given to the cemetery. Now, going back to Mr. Kokajohn, what's interesting, when you bring in, bring in, you set up a program like that, what he did is he provided scholarships, they don't call them VOTEC schools anymore, they call them career schools. So he set up scholarships for the VOTEC schools, which I thought was marvelous, because not everybody's going to college. Kingfisher has established a fund with the Community Foundation. Their visitor center, and where their Chamber of Commerce is located, that was done through gifts. They advertised the visitor center, and they got a two-hundred thousand dollar gift, and if you go in it, they have rooms labeled, because other donors paid the cost for that room. What I'd like to see is we set up and enthusiastically support a program of giving to the town of Hennessy. You don't know what will turn people on. We, we had the, we had the, the two gifts I referred to came clear out of the blue. Not only the amount, but what motivated that gift? Gift to the Hennessy Education Association, a gift, a gift to the town of Hennessy for the cemetery, a chapel. And I don't think that was on anybody's plate to do something like that, but that was done. So if we set up a, call it Christmas for Hennessy Legacy Fund, Giving Fund, you have situations where people are giving money for birthdays, anniversaries, Christmas, whatever. They can make a gift, a donation to this foundation in the, in someone's name. It's quite common. If you go into the Kingfisher Library, they got a board up. If you go in, if you go into the, they got a door, sign up by their front door, there's about twenty people that donated to that. You go to the Enid Museum, they got a board. So, my trouble, so that's what I like to set up, and let people know about it, they don't want to give, they don't give, but if we set it up, which would probably be a minimum cost, and let the public know what we're doing, maybe tell them, we have some priorities, that you could donate to whatever you want to.
I, we asked the attorney here, I've heard that, can the town pay for that, sponsor that stuff?
I, I, I think what trustee Smutnik has described is a, an entity, a foundation, he's called it a foundation, and that's, that's an okay word, that's created.
I'm not talking about setting up a foundation.
A foundation.
Okay, let's just call it a fund, is that?
Fund, yeah.
Fund, okay, fund. So if, I'm familiar with the Cherokee Strip operation in Enid, they take gifts from families all over northwest Oklahoma. And so if Mr. Smutnik wanted to accomplish the task, he could go to the Cherokee Strip Center and donate ten dollars and create a fund for the benefit of the town of Hennessy. And he could, he could even define that, he could narrow the scope of that, so he could, he could say, I want a, I want my fund to be used for a new chapel at the cemetery, or a new police car. He could define that, and then that fund would be created, and others could contribute to it, but the town would not be a part of that process. The town would simply be the beneficiary of that. And so that, the town cannot create that fund. An individual has to do it. And the, I've gone through that with several of the Enid charities. Most recently, Loaves and Fishes, it's a food bank, they wanted to set aside funds for a rainy day, and they wanted to use the Founda, or the Cherokee Strip Community Foundation to do that. And they can't do that. But they can, they can, when someone knocks on their door and says, I got ten dollars, and I want to do something for the town, or for, in this case, the food bank, they can create that fund at the Cherokee Strip Community Foundation.
But Scotty's already done that. Scotty made a pretty sizable donation, started a Hennessy United Legacy Fund through the Cherokee Strip Foundation.
Yeah, our organization.
I mean, there's a fund already been started.
We've got a board.
And it's on the town website.
Yeah. That's fine, advertise it.
That, again, the town can do that, the council member can lead.
The, the town can't do that, the town can't fund that.
I think maybe there's some confusion. He's asking, can the town fund the advertising?
Oh.
We know we can't give to the fund.
No, but you could put a notice of it in your water bill, you're all, you've already got that cost.
It's on the town website.
Curd. Yeah, it's on the town website.
But you just got through discussing that, like, on this vacant spot we have on a town council, people don't always know.
Well, you can't force somebody to look at something. I mean, if you put it on the website, people don't look at it.
But if you did a mailer.
I mean, you can't force people to read the website, you can advert, I mean.
You can give that, I'm getting off track, I won't go off track. To get your IRS deduction, you can donate it to someone like, you can give, you can write the check out to the town, it's an IRS deduction. You can also give it directly to a bank. Mr. Kokajohn, I think what, I don't remember the bank, he set the trust up, but all banks have trust departments. And you could give it to the Community Foundation of Oklahoma, or you could give it to the Cherokee Strip. The way I look at it, you don't tell people where to put the money. That's their business.
No, I understand that. What we're saying is, there's already a fund set up, so you can tell people, this fund is already set up, it's Cherokee Strip Foundation.
Who knows about it? I worked in sales. I worked in sales. And you, you can't sit back, you gotta let people know, we have depression, you can't wink your eye in the dark, people are not going to catch up on it. It needs to be advertised. Including it simply on the water bill, I think that's a great idea, you know? Scotty Hike has established a fund.
The problem is, there's a little bit of mix of public and private, so that fund has to be set up by, by, by someone as a private person. And so the town can't spend a lot of money on that, because the town, that's not a public purpose, it's a private purpose. This, this person's trying to raise money. Somebody may disagree with that, you know?
If you set up, if you set up a, a fund.
Well, what.
For, say, the pavilion.
What the town could do is to make available information about that fund, and, and put up a poster in the, in town hall that says, this fund is available, and if you're, if you, if you want to make some charitable gifts, this, this is really a good project, this benefits the town. That's, that's really, that's a common problem, is how to get that word out.
Thank you for sending that. I'm glad you're here this evening.
Yeah, so very, I'll, I'll tell you, very few of those funds have multiple donors. Most of them are created by families that say, I want to benefit my church, or I want to benefit the Girl Scouts, but I don't want them to have the money. I want to, I want to try to tinker with that myself. So, so it, the majority of the funds that Cherokee Strip holds are family funds.
I think that's, I think that's probably true for most of it. But there is, there is a one-point-three-five million gift to the library and museum to maintain the building and to cover operating expenses. It must be matched. Now, with your experience, now we've got to happen.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I would also encourage you to look into this other existing fund, and see if you couldn't, maybe ride along on that fund, or publicize that fund, or, or try to create more donations for that fund. And you can do that, you know, the, your local civic club, or the, any kind of gardening club, you know, you, you can disseminate that information to others. It's just a matter of, do people remember it, and are you advertising it often enough? And that's, that's what the problem is, is.
Richard, you're the reason that we started the Legacy, the Legacy Fund, Hennessy United, you're the reason that we started that fund.
But nothing's happening.
I wish it was happening too. I mean, and it's one of those.
I work in sales.
It's one of those, I don't know, maybe some of the right people have to die and give their money to it, or, I mean.
But they may not know, they may not know. I work in sales, in sales, your library was based on two things, the telephone and advertising. It needs to be advertising items and things. I think what the Vision Committee does is great, it's tremendous. But the town, I think, has more financial, more finances to work with.
That's what I'm talking about, advertising.
How much can we spend on that? We, as a town, we can't spend nothing, right?
I mean, it's probably, it's, it's, it's really something that needs to be done outside the town proper.
The advertising?
Well, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with using existing.
Like our website?
Like your website, where it's already paid for, just a matter of adding one item to it. And it would just be a, you know, don't forget the, the Legacy Fund, and.
If it's on the town site, you can do a mailer maybe twice a year, or something.
Yeah, I, I mean, if, if there's already existing mailing, then, then I'd use that. But it, those funds normally are successful, because somebody asked the right person at the right time to make the gift, and that's a real art form. And that's what, that's what she has experienced, is, is I've asked, but it wasn't the right time, or it wasn't the right person, or it wasn't the right amount. And so you just, it's a fishing expedition, you've just got, you've got to really take that on and work that in order to make progress.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent, and you got to do that every day, because you don't know when that person is ready. because you don't know when that person is ready to move. And maybe they, they're going to give it to somebody else, but you say, "Hey, this is your hometown."
And you can take a dozen leaders in your community and make them familiar with it and hope, you know, hope they'll pass it on to their friends. A lot of people, I'm a lawyer, and so a lot of people ask, you know, that, that don't have children, that don't have, that have no siblings and, and they have, they've acquired funds and they're, they're growing old. They go, you know, "What do I, what am I going to do with this?" And so lawyers, I mean, we offer every day, you know, here are charities that are available that, that really are needy and here's a list of them, you know. You know, pick 10 or pick, pick three or, or. And so, so that information does, I mean, it's discussed, but it, it just really, it's, it's hard to know you're talking to the right person at the right time about the right dollar amount. But if you, but if you do it.
There's another thing you're saying, but I want to contradict you just a little bit. I think these programs are now so well-known that people know about it and know what they want to donate to, just like Mr. Cokerjohn and the chap, that chapel at the cemetery. Nobody, all our civic associations in this town never thought, "Let's do a chapel at the cemetery." But here came a donor, an anonymous donor, and made money for that chapel.
Well, also, time solves a lot of problems. The Clarity Foundation was formed back in the 90s with a $1 million gift by Walter Sheffy, the.
Drugstore.
The drugstore guy. And, and now it's $15 million. Okay? So it, 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 it wasn't $15 million the second day or the third day after he made his contribution. But over the course of time, people hear about it or, or have, you know, no place else to, to spend their money or to, or to leave their money. And so it, it just, it just takes a, it might take Hennessy 25 years to get that, that ball rolling the right direction.
Richard, I found out something the other day that I didn't know. Say if Bert Reitz wants to go give $1,000 to the Library Museum through the Legacy Fund. I can't do that because it's got to be a minimum of $10,000. And I think, I think that that's a stumbling block because I think there's people out there, and I agree with you, maybe they would leave 50 or 100,000 in their will. But I think there's people out there now that would give $1,000 if we had it established to do that. But it takes $10,000.
Well, I'm looking for smaller donations. Maybe somebody will donate $100 for 10 years.
But it's got to be $10,000 to start, right? Am I correct, Scotty?
Yeah, that's why I started the $10,000 ones. So people can add to it if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay, but to earmark one, like for Library Museum.
Right, if you want to earmark it, you have to have $10,000. If you want to go to the general fund, you can put in any amount.
So if we wanted a Library Museum Legacy Fund, which I wouldn't have a problem with at all, but it's got to be started with $10,000.
I talked to the Community Foundation of Oklahoma. If I didn't misunderstand them, when they know what people are up to, they'll start a fund and there's no minimum.
That wasn't the way that was set up though. That's not the way that one was set up though.
Not the Cherokee Strip Foundation piece. $10,000 minimum to start a fund.
But you've already started it. So whatever.
That's in the general fund. He, he, he said a reason for it.
But he's done the $10,000 startup. So you can donate $1,000 to that.
Right, to that. The general fund and not to.
It's the Hennessy Legacy Foundation.
Scotty, did you set it up in a very general way?
Yes, it's, this is for the general funding of the Hennessy Legacy Foundation funding.
So it could be used for anything. It could be buy a police car, improve a park or?
I don't think it's for that, but it's for, it's, I don't think it's used on the city government.
Like a capital project.
Yeah, there's, there are five members on that group that would have to decide that. You don't have to have been able to decide much tonight. So.
It's going to take a while.
Okay, it is like, so that's.
Let me throw one thing out about that. You and I had a conversation at the Bison's Attorney a couple of weeks ago about that. And this didn't hit me because I told you I would be in favor of getting out mailers. And then I, at the time, did not think of it or did not realize the time for it. What if, mailers aren't that expensive. What if we ask some local people to chip in and do that? I would chip in and make copies of letters on my machinery and.
Well, if, if it's town, town oriented.
But it, but it's not. It's.
Something else. But let's do something.
I'm saying, me personally, as a business owner, not use town funds, but use private funds because I agree that needs to be promoted. Scotty, Scotty put up some money and it's, it's not growing anything but interest. And we need, you know, I have people all the time come in when someone passes away and I want it to go more fund to the church or I want it to the cemetery or, you know, because they don't know that exists. And I had one the other day that wanted it left to the town of Hennessy. But the problem there, it would just go in the general fund and be used for payroll. It would be lost. So I called and to find out if we could do it through the Legacy Fund. And that's when I found out it's got to be a $10,000 gift to start that. Or what?
Forest Pacific.
Forest Pacific, yes.
It's been a couple of years, but there's 1,800 addresses out of the Hennessy Post Office in it. The bulk rate would be $330 to mail it out, a one-page mailer. And whatever it costs to make a cheap mail. Paul Kelly does that.
Well, you know, you know what it would cost me to run? How many, how many mail, how many addresses?
1,800 addresses that, that are serviced out the Hennessy Post Office.
You know what it would cost me to run that on my machine? That one-page letter? $18. It costs, it costs me a penny and a coffee. So I would be more than happy to donate that. That's what I'm saying. If we could get other people to, you know, then you've got the postage business. And I know we're getting off track and it's late. I'm sorry. But let's discuss that later.
Okay.
Item J. You're thinking I'm losing my place. Item J is discussion of possible action to obtain a diagram and schematic both high school, building, library and auditorium. Richard.
Here, funny sheet. What sheet?
Our agenda for tonight.
Oh, did you lose your agenda?
Yeah.
I can give you another one. Hey.
Item J, Richard.
We need to, on the library, you could have somebody give, say, a half a million dollars to make improvements in the library, in the old school building, fireproofing, whatever. But you, you got, to get a, to get a grant or a gift, you're going to have to tell people what we're up to. Now, we, Tiffany contacted a firm to measure out the building. And that's a, that's a very difficult job because you've got auditorium in the high school and you've got slanted floors and various thickness of the walls. The bid came in at $8,000, Tiffany, if I remember correctly.
$89.50, I included it in your pocket.
Okay. And at that time, the oil patch went to heck in a handbasket.
Yeah, that was October of 2019.
And that's when that price was given?
Yes.
And I told Tiffany, I said, "Let's not do this because we, we might need that $8,000 to take care of the sewer plant and the water system." So I'd like to go back and do the diagram of the, of the school, including the library and the museum, and then do a schematic of what is possible in that. I'd like to expand the museum part. That is a wonderful space. And there's so many things that could be done with that. You could, you could have building on our success with the Perry quilt. We could have quilt exhibits. Quilt exhibits are a big thing. I stopped in Paducah, Kentucky. They're driving by, so I stopped in. I knew they had the quilt museum. And that's something I watch because of the Perry quilt. They had a quilt display from Japan. And they had international visitors. And they said they had visitors from all 50 states. So there's all kinds of things. You've got a marvelous space to work with. And in the old days, if you took that auditorium and, and kind of kept it like it was and then put in, expand the museum and put in an exhibit area or whatever, in the old days, people would say, "Well, that Hennessy doesn't have much money. Cheap little town. They couldn't fix it up nice like it should be." But now, if you went in there and put in a display case, expanded the museum, people would see that it was an auditorium and they would enjoy it. They would say, "That is clever. You use this auditorium for a museum." So both, the library needs to be measured out before you can do a schematic. The Bedford wanted a museum. So they went, they developed a schematic. The reason I know about it is they used the same architect that I did. That's how I found out about it. They did a schematic and then they went out and collected $800,000 and they built the museum.
I think one lady gave 500.
Tip of the guy.
There's a guy gave 500.
My best friend's mom's the one that started that.
And that's what happens. And I hadn't made this statement before.
Two, two rich old ladies in Medford, Oklahoma, started that deal. And they contacted the guy out of Medford. And then they actually raised $100,000 through having activities in Medford. Town of Medford had nothing to do with it. You actually talk to the ladies that built the program, the museum, they'll tell you how bad the city of Medford was to work with.
Well, I, I just, there are other people that also donated.
Oh, I know, I know.
There were lots of donors.
I sat out there in an audit and you told me about that Medford deal. I knew my best friend lived in Medford, so I texted him. I said, "Hey, was your mom involved in that deal?" And he said, "Yes." Next day, I was picking up a motor for my son. And he said, so I asked him that morning. He says, "You, uh, can you tell me about that?" He called his mom and the mom, we went to eat lunch together. And he told me all about it. It wasn't as rosy as it sounded. It was making sense. She didn't have no good thing to say about Medford when they went to build it. So I'm just saying.
I wish that a bill was here.
Yeah. Some guy I'd wish to all that gave them $500,000 to start that deal.
They were two big donors. But the point is, they developed a schematic and they got other donations to develop the museum. I made the point, it's always the big getters.
And I understand what you're saying about it. Well, let you know, Medford had nothing to do with that in regards to actually building that thing to get going.
And Richard, in all honesty, I think some of this stuff is Chamber of Commerce, a Chamber of Commerce's job. Unfortunately, we don't have one. You know?
Well, that's the point I'm making. Who takes the lead on it?
Exactly.
Who takes the lead? And the answer is, no one has.
And it's not, I don't think it's because.
My problem with it is.
People haven't wanted to. But it's just like what Mr. Winn told us. We can't, we can put, like, the advertising Legacy Fund on our water bill because we're already paying to print those. But we couldn't do a mailer for that purpose because that's using taxpayer money to fund a private entity.
What's the private entity?
The Legacy Foundation. Maybe I'm, am I wrong? Maybe I'm understanding it wrong.
Well, these are private buildings, correct? The school owns, does the school still own the school building?
No, we, we do.
Oh, the town.
No, the library, we own.
Oh, okay.
But like, the school owns their building and, you know what I mean?
So is the, is the, the question is, can you make efforts to try to develop those buildings into, for town use or?
They are town use. We've got the library in there now.
The old school is our library now.
Yeah.
And so, so that, if, if they are redeveloped, they would be redeveloped for a town use, like a museum or some other?
And we're using it for that now. But the building was built in the 1920s and it's.
1928?
It's old and it needs wiring and updating.
It needs fireproofing. It doesn't need handicap.
So we could, we can't use town funds to advertise the Legacy Fund. Let me ask you this question. If somebody donated the $10,000, Scotty, and earmarked that to be for a library slash museum, so that fund is there to benefit town property, then could the town use money to advertise it?
Well, it, it can be, it can be, whether there's a donation or whether it's in your general fund to start with, the town can spend money for public purposes. And that's a pretty, that's a pretty big basket. And, or economic development. And we often use economic development to justify investments that are kind of edgy by a town. For example, Enid bought Phillips University on the basis that, that it was going to use it to create economic development in the community. So, so most of the time when we do that, it's, it's a, we do it in the name of economic development because that's a, that's even a bigger basket. But as far as taking a building that you own and, and trying to, I guess, create a plan for its reuse, which would include architectural drawings and all this. I mean, I, I think you can do that if you think that, well, I think before I started that, I would say, okay, we need a X, Y, Z. We need a bigger swimming pool or we need a, a bigger community building. And then, okay, what, where would we cite that? And we'd say, okay, well, let's just try to use some of our existing buildings to do that. So I think you've got to develop your purpose first for, for the, for the building. And then, second of all, how much you're going to spend on, on, on architectural costs to determine what the total package is going to require. I think that's what you're saying. So that's what you want to do. So it's just a matter of how much are you going? Well, first of all, what's, what's the purpose going to be? And then what is your limit as far as trying to figure out what total cost would be and how that could be funded?
You're saying this so much better than how I.
Yeah. Now, I, there's a lot of ifs, buts and whens in there.
Yeah.
But you, you, you can do that under the town umbrella.
Okay, because what he's wanting to do is advertise for the Legacy Fund.
And we're past that.
And, I know, we are. But to develop and then to get a, a diagram and an archi- But to develop, and then to get a diagram, an architectural plan of the library as built. But it ties back to the legacy fund because you want that to fund the project to rejuvenate that building, correct?
I want to say the same thing, I'm going to say it in a different way.
Okay.
The town doesn't have the sense to improve that building. If I prove it fit, make it handicap.
You're right.
Complying to update it. We don't have the money. And you've got this magnificent building sitting there. I've said, I said it a thousand times, I'm going to say it again. If Hennessy's going to maintain its amenities and add new ones, it's going to have to be done one of two ways. Grants, or a monthly grant.
I agree.
And in this case, the city didn't take the lead, it was private individuals. But keep advertising, keep advertising. And it'll put an idea in somebody's head to do this.
And I'm, I'm trying. I'm sitting here trying to find a way to help you do that.
So if somebody to that legacy fund that we cannot, right now, we can't use taxpayer dollars to advertise that, you know, in the agenda item before, okay? So if somebody donates to that and designates it, the ten thousand dollars to the library museum, since there is an actual to the library museum, at that point, could we use money to advertise that? Since it's designated to the city.
Well...
I think that's what Bert's asking.
It is, it's town-owned property.
Yeah, I, I guess what could happen is if, if the town determines a need, and that this building might serve that need if it were redeveloped, the, the legacy fund could either pay for those drawings and give them to the city, or they could give the money to the city and say, "We're earmarking these, and we want you to go out and get drawings."
No, we would already have the drawings, okay? So once we already got the drawings, okay? And so now it's going to cost, say, seven hundred thousand dollars to, to fix up this library.
Okay.
And so we start having people earmark in that legacy fund to fix up the library.
Yes.
Can the city at that point start advertising that library museum?
No.
Still can?
No, it's still a problem. So, so what, what, what?
There you go.
What you do, okay, you define your, you define your project, you determine what the cost is going to be, you figure out what, what part of that the city's going to fund, or maybe obtain grant, prompt grants, things like that. And then you tell the legacy fund, "Hey, listen, we're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short on our project. So would you go out and raise that hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So we can, and then donate it to the town, and now we got our pack, and now we got our deal done." So they, they just need to, they, they need to remain separate from you. It's, it's a little bit like church and state. They can't big brother you, or, or make you do things that you otherwise wouldn't do. But certainly, they could be your partner, and that's how, that's how it would happen. Yeah.
Does that help you, Richard? Or did I make you more confused?
No, you always ask good questions and points.
But I think you could, the town can start the ball rolling by determining what purpose would it serve, and then spend a minimal amount on, on some kind of architectural renderings that would get people a little more interested in it.
And I'm going to make another point, the big hitter. If the library was measured out and have all these, do a schematic of what things we could do, then you could, there might be a big hitter out there that gives five hundred thousand dollars. But they're not going to give it, if we said, "We've got an old high school building built nineteen twenty-eight. It's got the old wiring in it, it's not, you know, they're not going to give, nobody's going to give money." These people had a vision.
You got the vision.
Got the vision. So you, to me, this foundation grant is just terribly confusing. To me, it's so simple. A donor can give money to the town, write a check out to the town. You can put it in a bank trust department. You can give it to the Cherokee Strip Foundation, or you can give it to the Community Foundation of Oklahoma. It can't be that complicated. Tulsa and Oklahoma City have foundations, and I'm sure they got different funds. And I know with the community foundation, if you have a town like, I think Alva's got a bunch of accounts.
Well, the, these other communities that you've talked about, they may have foundations, but the town didn't start them. An individual started them. And then I can name my fund, anything I want to.
I'm not talking about starting a foundation. I'm not talking about starting a foundation.
Foundation, that's, that's a real expensive word, to get those things going. But what I'm saying is, the town doesn't do that, they're, they're simply the beneficiary of that process.
Absolutely.
Others do it, and there's no control over whether I call my fund at the Cherokee Strip Community Foundation. I could call it, I, I can call it the Town of Hennessy Fishing Fund. And you, and no one can do anything about that. So I can call anything I want to. And that's what's happened in these other communities. Some one individual has gone in and tried to create a fund that nobody can really argue about. It's not named after me or you.
Absolutely.
So, 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 so everybody thinks it's just a general fund, but, but there's an individual that started that fund.
And you could have a, you've got two, three nice parks. You could, you say, Park, Old Foot Park Fund, Memorial Park Fund, Pat Hennessy Park Fund, Swimming Pool Fund.
Well, don't we already have like a one point three million dollar donation to that library?
Yes, but it's got to be matched.
Better be matched, or more or less not really a donation.
I have a lot of stipulations.
That's what it's going to take to fix that building up, and it'll maintain expenses.
Couldn't we do, like, go talk to that guy and ask him to refund his way into that?
I'm the guy. My wife and I set that up in two thousand.
So then redo that to start that, start that library?
Pardon?
Can we maybe redo that and start the deal where the library, to get started?
Yeah, you got one point three five million to match.
You got ten years, eleven years that you've got to, to, to...
The first ten years, all the income, all, first ten years, all the income goes to Hennessy. After that, it's got to be matched. So if, say, fifty percent of it is matched...
But there is no way, there's no way.
Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. After ten years, if fifty percent of it's matched, the other fifty percent goes to Oklahoma State University Foundation.
Right, but there ain't no way down Hennessy could ever match or...
Mr. Coca-John probably gave a gift of three or four million dollars.
They're not down Hennessy.
Pardon?
They gifted down Hennessy.
He gave it to the Hennessy Education Foundation.
But that's not us. I mean, I'm just saying, there ain't no way we can match them, them stipulations that, to, to, to build that library that you want.
My problem, since, my problem is this word, "no way." I've heard that too many times.
Yeah, and I can donate a million dollars to down Hennessy, but that's street.
Anything is possible, if you have a vision.
Curves all over. I'm just saying, it just, you know, if you want the library, you got a chance to start it.
It's not only the library.
I understand that.
That, that gift is also for the gym.
I've read all of it.
Can I say something?
Yeah, okay.
In my past, in my past, yeah. In, in Fort Smith, where I was from, and raising money for United Way, and being the chairman of these events and so forth, there are, like you say, there's beneficiaries, or, you know, already set out there, there's funds that you can go to, and you solicit them to make a donation, you just sell your project. You don't have to have it, just, you know, you're basically just asking for a big donation. And there were, like, the Kilpatrick's or somebody like that. Sometimes they'll, you know, to them, you know, two hundred thousand dollars is, you know, that goes a long ways, but to them, it's nothing. But instead of trying to start something from scratch, it might be better to go shopping somewhere else that they would be willing to give their money to, just not yet.
And you, but when you approached these people, you had everything.
Well, yeah, you have to have a package to say...
You have to have a package.
Which is what your diagram to get started.
And on the pavilion, I'd go to some of these old companies. The...
Well, Richard, let me tell you something. I had a thought one time, and tell me if we're getting too far off the agenda, and I need to stop because I don't want to be in trouble, but I had a thought one time about, and I talked to Mary Haney about it, and I talked to Tiffany about it, and you are very well aware of this because you've got a sign on your building that says, "Future home of John C. Carter Museum." John C. Carter, who graduated from Hennessy High School in nineteen twelve, invented the reflective seismograph. He and another gentleman formed a company in Texas, and I think it was in the forties, that company was renamed Texas Instruments. We're talking about multi-billion dollar company. Maybe we need to go look at them and say, "We've got this building that John Carter didn't go to school in, but he graduated from Hennessy School, and thirteen years later, this building was built, and we want to name it the John C. Carter Texas Instrument Library and Museum. Will you give us ten million dollars for it?" You know?
That's what I'm saying. I know I've got everybody bored to tears tonight. But we just, nothing is happening, Bert, that just frustrates the hell out of me.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah. Thank you for saying what you just said.
Yeah, because we don't know. We may, I'll tell you another thing I discovered, and here again, on my agenda, and I apologize to all of you because it is late. But we were going through some old records of the funeral home, and found a note written to Ralph Corddry on a typewriter from John, I mean, I'm sorry, from Sam Walton. It turned out, Sam Walton's grandparents are buried in the Hennessy cemetery.
Really? Oh, that's kind of dope.
So it may be, we could go to Walmart Foundation and say, "Sam's grandparents are buried in our city. We would like some help."
See, talking about these things, look what we generated. You just made two suggestions right there. Texas Instruments.
But we're not doing it anyway.
And I'm at the Bentonville, that place that they made Wal-Mart. Walmart made is beautiful, an art museum. It's magnificent. But, but I, I understand what you're wanting to do, and I'm not saying no way it can't be done. I'm saying we've got to be very careful how we legally do it with taxpayer funds. But I think writing letters to start with those two entities...
But I think there has to be groundwork, yeah.
Well, I agree. Yes, Jack?
All right, so we have a foundation, or whatever we're calling it, that Richard induced.
I don't know.
Scotty going.
Well, the United, Hennessy United, yeah.
All right, so isn't it, I understand, but isn't it Hennessy United's job, or the foundation, or whatever we're calling this thing's committee, that's in charge of this thing, to do what you're asking this board to do? Then why isn't that board doing their job?
They don't have the money. No, 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 they actually, we have, we have, I'm not on that committee or foundation.
It just, it sounds to me like you've got a, you've got a board problem on, over here, not over here. You're asking the wrong people for help. Now, this, this board needs the money to do what you're wanting to do, you know, improve the library, but you're asking the wrong people to take action. It's, it's the foundation that's not doing anything.
Jack, I came here first. I, I was aware that his Hennessy Vision Committee was there.
Right.
But I came here for five years, to measure out that library, come up with a schematic. The town has the resources to do those sorts of things. And say, you got a grant, somebody gives about a hundred thousand. It's going to be the town to finish. Sorry. That's going to do the work. The Vision Committee is not large enough. They don't have the finances, they give you some, they've got some good projects going on. I wish I would, those projects with the school, I wish that was in place when I went to school.
But here's where I'll tell you where I'm at, Richard. I got town employees that are living off of property wages, and you're going to ask me to spend twenty or thirty thousand dollars to get a library started? You know, to start something when our town employees...
No, no.
Were you asking me for eight thousand dollars right here?
The exact opposite is, the exact opposite is true. If we fund the expenses for the park, for our parks, if we fund the expenses for the library and museum and the old gym, that makes more money available to the town. You can spend it for street use.
Today, you're asking me to spend eight thousand dollars to proof them, to do an outline of that, of that library? And like I said, I got guys who can't even hire dispatchers for nine dollar an hour because people don't want to come to work here, you know? Our money's not, you know, you're, it just, we're putting our money in different places that don't need to be. You know, that's all I'm saying.
If the town doesn't want to support the library, what I suggest is have the load on it. If the town doesn't want to do the library, tear it down, I have no problem.
But I think we need the library.
Yeah, I'm not against the library.
One thing I kind of want to know, though, in spending this money for this drawing, is how detailed? Because I feel like what you're wanting to accomplish, Richard, is something that an architect could look at and say, "This is the way this sits now, and this is what would have to be done to make it look like this in the future." They're going to need really detailed drawings, like where load-bearing walls are, what the thickness of the floor is, what the foundation is, the wiring. Am I, am I right? I mean, are we getting any, take that detail?
He went into pretty, I know he said, I know he mentioned the width of the walls and that sort of stuff. But what could approach an architect, say, "Do you need the detailed measurements?" We didn't do that, maybe that should be done to, to come up with a schematic.
I think, and I know you don't want to put things off because you, and you feel like I put you off, and I'm, I'm not trying to do. What if we had a meeting with this architect and found out, what are we going to get for that eighty-nine hundred dollars? And is that going to be enough to get a future plane built?
That would be a start, but in the baby contacts, you know, more than just one architect can get some...
I think that's a great idea.
But let's get started.
I think that's a great idea, to find out what, what is it.
And on the pavilion, it needs to be done too. The idea that the pavilion came from the town council, it didn't come from me. And when that was suggested, I thought, "Well, that's a wireless idea." So we sold those two steel buildings, we'd have the money to do it. But let's move on, it's later.
Well, let, let me ask you one more question. Would you meet up with... Would you meet up with me? We could meet in here at some point and talk about this, and talk about getting architects and looking at it, and because I have some ideas for some things for the legacy fund that might help with this.
Okay.
But it's getting late.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, I think, discussion with possible action to obtain schematic and a proposal for 11 lots, former Johnson lumberyard.
We've done that.
Okay.
We did?
Well, we kinda combined it with this.
It's the same thing.
Let's, let's do the same thing on that, Richard. Does that work for you?
Right.
Okay. Item L's, discussion with possible action to schedule a long-term infrastructure planning conference, led by and sponsored by the town council, will be held in January. I think that may be on our calendar.
Okay, I'll keep it real short. Do you see how long we've been here tonight? There's, Kingfisher has a two-day planning conference. We can't come in here in a town council meeting where we have all these other issues and talk about long-term planning. You have, it has to be a special meeting. So let's, let's just skip over it.
Okay.
'Cause we'll, we'll start with our conversation, Bert, and go from there. I interrupted you, you said you got it scheduled?
I think we have a planning meeting scheduled, am I correct, Tiffany?
Yes, I'm working on confirming the date.
Okay. And I think there needs to be a separate meeting for the old high school building, including the library, museum, and the gym. And what are we gonna do with this marvelous piece of land that we have?
Okay.
And I think that needs to be separate, 'cause you need to discuss what are the things that go into a development like the pavilion.
Okay.
So let's, we'll, we'll start, you and I'll start out, and let's skip over those two items tonight.
Okay. You know, draft zoning, draft zoning map for comprehensive plan that will be displayed for public review for 30 days at Town Hall on the website. Tiffany?
Lost her.
She didn't forget it.
She escaped.
We weren't looking.
Can you take over for me for a minute?
Sure.
I apologize, I'm getting a work call that I need to go out and take care of, and I'll be right back. Please.
I said, please.
Oh, sweet. In the comprehensive plan, we've been working on the draft zoning of what, pretty much what currently everything is, currently zoned. And so this map is gonna be displayed here, and then it's also gonna be on our website. So we're gonna have a 30-day comment period for everyone. So everybody will be able to review it and do public comments over the next 30 days. So.
Tiffany, that, on Main Street, the plans that that gentleman presented, we adopted. The Main Street is kinda commercial, it's not that, I can't think of the.
It's a.
I was hoping for a, I can't think of the right name, but I'll call it.
It's a downtown, it's a downtown mix, it's a downtown mixed juice district.
Okay. Now, I think we have to, as the council, vote to rezone Main Street.
No, you don't have to. It, it, once we, once we, this is, once we adopt this, then it will, it will adopt this into there.
Automatically?
Mm-hmm.
If somebody wanna take a vacant building on Main Street and make it into a home residential use, they'll be allowed to do that. Or they can go to a lender and get a residential loan rather than enforce it to a commercial loan, which is short-term and a higher interest rate, and a larger down payment.
I think.
The way I interpreted it that night, he presented it, it didn't do that.
Only in your, your place. Only with your, um, champlin.
See, that's commercial right now.
Mm-hmm, and yours is gonna be low, um, low-density mixed juice district. We changed yours.
Is that commercial, low-density?
Um, it's kind of a mixed juice. It could be commercial or residential. But that way you could get your residential.
It's like, I won't push it, but you gotta make the lenders happy.
That way you could get your residential rate. It, it, it states that in, in our zoning code.
What the lenders will say, you got, they'll show a picture, they'll say, "You got a building on Main Street," and they'll want the property tax records, and it'll show "commercial" on there. They're not gonna make that.
It doesn't say "commercial." It says "low-density."
It may have to say.
Low-density mixed juice.
Okay.
Okay? So, but, yeah, we're gonna take comments for the next 30 days.
Then what, what's the next step after that?
Um, the next third, the, then the next one, then she's gonna be, um, working on the future use for the, like, the next 15, 20 years, and we'll work on that map.
Okay. Discussion with possible action to renew employee dental insurance with Delta Dental. We've already got that, this is just simply renewed, correct?
Correct.
Make a motion to.
Same, I got it, okay.
I second it.
You're right, yeah.
I make the motion to take action to renew the employee dental insurance with Delta Dental.
I second that. Harold Cole?
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
It's under, it's great that it stayed the same price.
Item P is discussion with the action to, the possible action to renew employee life insurance with Dearborn Life Insurance. Got anything on that, too?
It stayed, the rates stayed the same, too. It says Blue Cross Blue Shield at the top, but it's actually Dearborn.
You got that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move to renew employee life insurance with Dearborn.
Again.
Harold Cole?
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard? Here.
Okay, item Q. Accept Kyle Keaton, Levi Copeland, and Dustin Grumner as firefighters. Let me give you a real brief, a real brief overview on that. These three joined the fire department, according to state law, firefighters join the fire department, they go ahead and enter this pension system, however, they're on probation for a year. And they have completed their year satisfactorily. So at that point, then the town votes to accept their, accept them as firefighters.
You're better accept them, 'cause two of those guys on there are getting pretty old.
You're exactly right.
Bert, what you failed to say is, we also have them complete firefighter one within the first year. And they have done that successfully, and these three have also done firefighter two, which was not asked of them, so, they're excellent.
And they're the only three in our department that have firefighter two.
Correct.
Which is very, that's a very advanced training, so we're very proud of them. Thanks, Jack, for pointing that out. So I move to accept Levi Copeland, Kyle Keaton, and Dustin Grumner as firefighters. I second that.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
All right, item R, executive session presented to 25 Oklahoma Statues, Section 3071, to discuss appointing town board member and executive session. I move to adjourn to executive session.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Okay. Are you ready to reconvene?
I, I move to reconvene.
Second.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Okay, item S is discussion with possible action to appoint town board member. We will be taking no action. Item T, accept or reject any resignations, not receive power to postpone the agenda. New business. Citizens' comments.
Turbine on Osprey.
They submitted the plans to DEQ.
Okay, council person reports, Richard.
Bert?
Council person report. Harold?
What I wanna say, I, I really enjoyed how many people showed up tonight. Thank you very much, and it's great looking out there to having people look back at me, so, thank you for coming.
And also, to, to you candidates, there have been openings on the town board. In fact, Hennessy used to run by ward, and I think, maybe when Tim was mayor, that was changed, because there were times, nobody in that ward wanted to run. And there's been times where we haven't had anybody want to run for a position, or one person that would go on and oppose. So I appreciate you all's willingness to want to serve the community, and if you don't make it on this time, my seat's gonna be open in April '23. So, just a little over a year.
Since we took no action, next, next, we can say that there's going to be an election, right? Does everybody clarify that right?
Well, I, I think the result of not taking any action is that no one's appointed, that the 60 days will expire, and that the next option for the board to fill the vacancy would be by special election.
And follow-up on Bert, it'll be '77 when my turn is up, so. Probably won't run until '77.
I would consider that he promised me there won't be a ice storm.
That's normal, thanks.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn, oh, you're a god?
Yes, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All right. Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Richard? Bert?